We have Valium, yay.
Unmask. Okay. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the City Council and WPCA to order today is Monday, May 17th, 2021. Participating by Zoom is we have Councilwoman Riwett, Councilwoman Wagner, Councilman Waldron participating in person here at City Hall Auditorium, Councilman Rubino, Councilman Cavanero. And for the record, it is now 6:32 PM. So the first thing on the agenda, we have a public hearing for the purposes of soliciting citizen input regarding the possible amendments to the Code of Ordinances, including the incorporation of new hearing procedures for ordinance violations, procedures for contesting violations imposed under the Code of Ordinances, and possible changes to Chapter 161 property maintenance. Before I open this meeting for public comment, Carol, you're going to read the notice into the record? You?
Do you do the pledge?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
She's calling me out. I didn't ask for the pledge first. Can we all stand and pledge a flag, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of Republicans, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're not waiting until the regular meeting.
I know, that's fine, yeah. So, thank you, Carol. So, yeah, could you read the notice into the record, please?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen of the City of Torrington will conduct a public hearing on Monday, May 17th, 2021, starting at 6:30 PM in the City Hall Auditorium located at 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to solicit citizen input regarding possible amendments to the Code of Ordinances, including the incorporation of new hearing procedures for ordinance violations, procedures for contesting violations imposed under the Code of Ordinances, and possible changes to Chapter 161 property maintenance. Members of the public may attend in person or submit their comments in writing to the City Clerk's office before 4:00 PM on Monday, May 17th, 2021. Written comments that are sent electronically to city underscore clerk@torringtonct.org or by mail to the City Clerk's office at 140 Main Street in Torrington will be forwarded to the Board of Councilmen for their review and read aloud at the start of the public hearing. Instruction for joining the meeting by Zoom are available. There's a call-in number for the phone. All interested parties are invited to participate and submit their comments. Copies of the proposed changes are on file and available for review in the City Clerk's office located at Torrington City Hall, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. The proposed changes may also be viewed online on the city website, dated at Torrington, Connecticut, this 10th day of May, 2021. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you, Carol. So at this point, I don't see anyone from the public that wishes to address the council, but I'll call it anyways. Were there any comments submitted in writing?
No, there were not.
Nothing in writing?
Nothing.
All right, then, I'll do the usual. Are there any comments from the public regarding the ordinances? Any comments from the public regarding ordinance? Any questions or comments regarding the ordinance? Seeing and hearing none, I'll move to close the public hearing. I will declare the public hearing closed. Close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Moving into the regular agenda. Item number one on the agenda is a presentation by the Mayor's Committee on Youth regarding the 2021 kindness campaign. Speaking for the Mayor's Committee on Youth, I have Vice Chair Michael Iwill. Yeah, if you want to unmask him, go ahead.
Generally, this campaign, as you can see from the title, it's to spread kindness throughout our town. This campaign, it can benefit like the town. It's confidence as a whole because some people, they could be having bad days and kindness just being spread or seeing like, or seeing these signs or something kind could lift them and lift the town as a whole. If we start, if we start the kindness campaign here, it could go on to schools, which would really help, and it could go to other towns and even as a state, we could be, I don't know, really kind. And it'll create a healthier environment for those who are really struggling, especially after COVID. It'll be hard for them. They, I mean, they could be going through hard times, so they could really need something to lift them.
Excellent. So, the posters that you have here, they're actually lawn signs. And Michael, on the podium right there, you'll find the metal rods that people can use. So the kids, the Mayor's Committee on Youth wanted to bring this idea forward for a number of reasons. Not only because they wanted to remind the public that it's a small community, that kindness matters, but also they wanted to use this as an opportunity to do a little bit of a campaign in light of the pandemic. They haven't been able to meet on a regular basis. So they developed a couple of strategies to do random acts of kindness. There were some stones that were being painted. Michael, I think you started a little bit of an Instagram.
Oh, right. There's this, I keep forgetting the name of things called the Veneti Restaurant. Their menus are like all in all Italian. I think it's pretty cool. And one of my ideas were to support a town that, I mean, a restaurant that could be struggling, especially after the pandemic.
So a little bit of a social media, which is their alleyway, not mine. And I'm very proud of these kids because despite the pandemic, they somehow managed to find an opportunity to make their year productive. So I think you have a sign there for each of the council members. There's actually six council members. If you want to give each council member a sign. I wanted to also introduce the artist that did the artwork. You'll see the.
I can.
Yeah.
I'll take one. I'm not a councilman, but I'll take.
He has a lawn. He could put them on. So, thank you. So, January, Sharon, was it about January? Sharon Cataldo, who, I don't want to, I don't want to give away her age. She was a year behind me in high school. We went to high school together. In January, reached out. She had this, this painting that she had done. And she wanted to work with the city with some way to present this message. So she reached out to my office. I immediately connected Sharon with the Mayor's Committee on Youth. And I don't know, Sharon, if you want to just talk a little bit about what your thought process was when you, when you came up with this idea?
This young man has said it all.
Yes, he did.
I know.
Yeah.
Just the whole kindness thing, hoping that after the pandemic, because so many people are struggling and there's truly too much anger and hate in the world. He has said it all.
Thank you. So Sharon works at Keystone. I think that if anybody who, when we talk about essential workers and especially where employees that were working with our most vulnerable population, I was especially touched when Sharon reached out because I thought this really was the perfect way to get our Mayor's Committee on Youth on a project that they could do. And we're grateful for the artwork. It's really lovely. So does anyone have any questions or comments for the kids or? All right. Thank you very much. Good job, Michael.
Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job. Thank you.
Moving on, item number two on the agenda. And if you, this is great learning civics opportunity for you to see your government at work if you kids want to stick around. But if you, you want it, good. Excellent. Thank you.
You're just being kind, girl.
We'll make it short.
You can sit up here. Ouch.
Okay, so item number two, I will entertain a motion to establish a hearing procedures to contest violations imposed under the Code of Ordinances of the City of Torrington and approve the proposed amendments to Chapter 161 as described in the draft that was received for record by the City Clerk on May 3rd, 2021.
I'll move two.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino, and a second by Councilman Cavanero. Are there questions on this motion?
Since Mayor, just thank you to the ordinance committee for all their hard work.
Thank you.
Welcome.
All right, so this is a roll call vote, so I'll start with the council members in the auditorium. Councilman Cavanero?
Aye.
Councilman Rubino?
Aye.
To our Zoom room, Councilman Wagner?
Aye.
Councilman Waldron?
Aye.
And Councilwoman Riwett?
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Thank you. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to public in accordance with Section 4E of the City Council and WPCA Meeting Rules of Procedure.
I'll move three.
Thank you. Councilman Waldron?
Your second.
And a second by Councilman Cavanero. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone from the public wishing to address the board on matters? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move into item four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held May 3rd, 2021.
Move four.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino, seconded by Councilman Cavanero. Questions on the minutes or the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five, I'll entertain a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, a motion to schedule a public hearing on Monday, June 7th, 2021, at 6:30 PM to review, discuss, and solicit citizen input regarding proposals for participation in the 2021 Neighborhood Assistance Act program.
Move five.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino, seconded by Councilman Cavanero. Questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer to enter into a service agreement for on-call inspection services at the rate of $30 per hour with Walter Coombs and Stephen Roy of Torrington for the scope of services described in Mr. Cousins' memo dated May 12th, 2021, and authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding the execution of service agreements and other contract administration-related items as renewals and approval payment invoices.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. I heard Councilwoman Riwett. Are there questions? Mr. Cousins is here, if there are questions. Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Deputy Public Works Director and City Engineer and authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to weigh the city's bid process and accept the Town of Southbury's townwide chip seal bid 2020-10010 contract as awarded by Seymour Sealing Service, Inc. of Wallingford, Connecticut, for the performance of chip sealing for the duration of the contract, which currently expires on June 6th, 2022, and all subsequent renewal terms.
Move seven.
Thank you, I heard. I heard Councilman Rubino, seconded by Councilwoman Riwett. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council here enacting as a WPCA to approve the following payments from Fund Number 490 Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvement to yield Industries $2,100 for emergency sewer repair on Alice Street and to yield Industries $24,380 for emergency sewer replacement on Clarence Street.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cavanero. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize a mayor pursuant to CGS Section 12-179 and 7-148AA to release the liens described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated May 17th, 2021.
I'll move.
Heard Councilwoman Riwett, seconded by Councilman Waldron. Do I have, are there questions on the motion or the memo? Hearing none. I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on list dated May 17th, 2021.
I'll move.
Heard Councilman Waldron and Councilwoman Riwett. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council here enacting as a WPCA to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated on list dated May 17th, 2021.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino.
Second.
Yes, thank you. Seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Rubino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Paul, is there anything that you needed to add this evening? Thank you. Carol, anything from the City Clerk's office? Okay.
We just finished our tax liens, and they did about 1,500, and they're just about finished. Last year, we discovered a smoother process where our software communicated with the tax collector's software. So it's all digital, and it's, it's pretty sweet. So we're happy about that. And just about all set for the June 1st dog licensing season. And that's all that's going on in the Clerk's office.
Thank you, Carol. So to my, to the screen, I see Ed Towsey is on the line. Did you have anything to add this evening, Ed?
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. And I guess that's it. Anything from Corporation Council's office?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, we'll move into item 13. I will entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members.
Move 13.
Thank you, Councilman Rubino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Cavanero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll go to the screen first. Anything this evening, Councilwoman Wagner?
Just one question, Mayor. I believe you received the communication from Mario Longobuco, and wondering if we should be setting a public hearing date for.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I think you cut out.
I'm sorry. The, I believe you received a memo from Mario Longobuco with the results of our subcommittee meeting, and I'm wondering if we should be setting a public hearing for the month of June?
Is this with regard to the PLA?
Yes.
No, all right, so that does not require a public hearing.
Okay. Well, I wasn't sure. It was mentioned at our meeting, so I wasn't sure if that was required.
Right. So the Subcommittee of the Building Committee's recommendation first must go to the Building Committee, the full Building Committee, which is the Board of Education. From the Board of Education, the recommendation would come to the council. So I think that will probably be on the next council agenda for approval.
Thank you very much. Nothing else tonight.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question pursuant to that?
To the PLA?
Yes, to, to Councilwoman Wagner's question.
Sure.
Given the complexity and the consequences of that decision, personally, I would like to have the council meeting followed in sequence at the appropriate time, having, not having a council meeting for us to discuss it amongst ourselves as councilmen and women before we push it to a vote and have the vote set for a follow-up meeting so that we, there's an awful lot of, there's an awful lot of information and an awful lot of consequences in multiple directions to that decision. And I would like us as a deliberative body representing the whole of Torrington to be able to just discuss it ourselves.
Yes.
Think about it, talk to people that we know on the pertinent issues, and then come back and make a decision on the follow-up meeting.
Okay.
That's okay with, that's okay with everyone else on the, on the council, obviously.
Certainly. So what we'll do is we'll schedule the present, we'll have, tell you, this first meeting in June is going to be crazy because we have budget also. So what I'll do is we'll put it on the agenda for a presentation by the Building Committee. And then from there, instead of an action item, we'll just leave it as a presentation.
That would be my recommendation. I would feel a lot better about that personally.
Okay.
I don't know what the rest of the council feels.
I think that was the plan as well, that the Subcommittee would come and make that presentation.
Right. And again, it isn't the Subcommittee that makes the presentation. It would be the Building Committee. The Subcommittee is a Subcommittee of the Building Committee. So it's the Building Committee that has to come before the council.
Whatever the normal sequence is, just so that we can caucus as a council ourselves and not be forced to vote at night.
Got it. Absolutely. Yes, you're right. I would agree. All right, so, lost track of where we were. Was there anything else you needed to add tonight, Councilwoman Wagner?
No, nothing at all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Waldron, anything this evening?
No, nothing for me. 24 more days until I retire.
24 days, how many hours?
I got it on an app here, I think, but no.
Oh, I'm sure. Is there anything from Councilwoman Riwett?
Well, I have 33. I don't like to do the countdown, Drake, but I have 33 days before my retirement. So, look at how much time all three of us, Paul and you and I.
I know. We're dropping like flies here.
I know, but.
It's going to be one big factor.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Just making a general, a general observation.
I think you're all glad that Paul is masked and you didn't hear what he said.
I just said that I think we'll be able to provide more public service to the community with all this time.
Yes, I would agree.
No, Mayor, I don't have anything else. I still, you know, am curious if you've got any further discussion or requests from Verge. But assuming it's not on the agenda tonight, I'm imagining you haven't gotten a formal request, or?
No. Well, I know that the Verge has reached out to our Economic Development Director. That is the process that anybody seeking a tax abatement would take. Obviously, investigating what, what policies or statutes would apply is part of her review process. However, I did take a ride up to that site, not this past weekend, the weekend before, and was very disappointed that the landscaping is not up to our standard. The screening, while they have the fence and it's that, that powder-coated fence with some screening material, the trees that they're supposed to plant have not been planted yet. So our message back to Verge is that, that they have to finish the work that they promised to do before we can even bring any, entertain any ideas on abatement. So I suspect there will be a future agenda with just a presentation of the facts. So we'll keep, we'll keep it on the, we'll keep it on everybody's radar.
I know you will, and I appreciate that, Mayor. And I also appreciate all the work that, you know, you've been doing with the budget preparation. So anxious to see the outcome of that. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councilman Rubino, anything this evening?
With that, nothing, Mayor.
Nothing. Councilman Cavanero?
Yeah, just one request, Mayor. And I'm not sure if, again, I'm not sure if I'm the only one who would like this information, or if it was provided to the council in a way, and I just am not aware of it. It has to do with an article last week about the new gym for THS. There was an article about they're considering not building a new one, but refurbishing the old one. And personally, I would just like to have more information on why that decision is being made. I'm not at all. It just concerns me in a number of ways, which I don't want to necessarily go into detail here, but I would like to know why they're making that decision, who is making that decision, and what that portends for future decisions. We haven't even started this yet. They presented, they presented a proposal for $178 million, correct, for a new school?
159, yes.
We haven't even begun step one on this process, and there is some complication resulting in compromises to that plan. And I want more explanation. And I think the people of Torrington, particularly since this is such a sports-minded town, I think one of the selling points was clearly the fact of having a state-of-the-art gymnasium and sports complex there. And I think we as a council and the people of Torrington and the taxpayers of Torrington deserve a much more detailed explanation for what this process is, who's going to own this process, this decision. Okay?
Yes.
Does the rest of the council agree? I mean, this is me personally, but I would like, I would like to hold somebody's feet to the fire to explain more detail why we're doing this.
If I could just step in at the meeting last week, that was one of the things that I asked when we were into our discussion on the PLA versus non. I said, we promised the taxpayers we would stay at a certain amount of money, and we gave them the plans to look at. And we're already considering making changes. And I said that I personally would like to see more, and I thought that the council would agree.
Well, I think that's, I understand. So you're, you're in agreement that we should get more, we should have more explanation for why they're, we're already at this fork in the road, and we haven't begun yet.
And there was also so much information in prior discussions about the condition of the gym, that there are too many aspects of that to be considered. So I think we need a lot more information for.
And quite frankly, Mayor, I also, as part of this discussion, and as a consequence of this discussion, I really want to know what the decision-making process is. Okay? Who's making these calls? I just have a very, very sour taste in my mouth about the upgrade to the Torrington High School, the last one. I forgot what it was, but how badly that went based on real poor project management made by a number of different people. But at the end of the day, poor project management. And I know this, as you know, I have sort of, you know, certain level of expertise in my family. And when that thing was being done, the number of things that were pointed out to me that were, corners were cut, shortcuts taken, compromises made that would result in problems, and every one of those things that was pointed out by a non-involved professional turned out to be true. And I go back even further to Torrington Middle School, once again, changing plans after the original plan was, was approved and designed by the Architectural Forum resulted in endless series of compromises, as we all know, and lawsuits ultimately because of, you know, the compromise that had to be made to the roof and therefore blah, 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 blah. So this really, I think, as a City Council and a mayor, I think we need to step up and say, we're keeping our, this is $178 million. This needs to serve us for at least 50 years. We're paying attention to who's making these decisions and why. So I, yes, thank you for reporting me, Sharon.
Yeah, what we can do is, in light of the fact that the Building Committee would be coming before the council to present the proposal for a PLA agreement, we can, while we have them here, captive audience, have them report to us on that.
But you are saying, that's the same then as the budget.
It is.
So let's, you know, Mayor.
Make it a separate.
I don't think this discussion has to be made in the next two weeks. Follow me. So the budget is that important, and you clearly have timelines on that. This isn't, I would, I would vote to delay it yet another week or another meeting. This isn't, I would, I would vote to delay it yet another week or another meeting cycle.
The second meeting in June.
Okay.
Yes.
Just for efficiency's sake.
Absolutely.
You agree, Sharon? I mean, you're, I think you're.
I'm totally in agreement.
Okay. Does the rest of the council want to do this? I mean, you've heard from two of us.
So I, you know, was invited to only three subcommittee meetings of the Building Committee. So, you know, believe me, there was a lot of information that was provided. I missed the last meeting, which as you may or may not know, Paul, it was a split vote. You know, they couldn't really break a tie between PLA or non-PLA or. So I think it's worthy of a great deal of discussion, certainly with a presentation from the, from this Building Committee, not the subcommittee, but the Building Committee. I mean, there was only three meetings that council members were invited to attend. So I would agree, Paul. I think it's a huge project. I have great concern that this is already going to be over the budget that the referendum had, you know, gone out to the public to get a vote. So I sort of am concerned as well, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, that we were 3-3 at the second meeting. And this last meeting, when they took the first vote, it was four to one. And then they, then David asked for a lot more questions and he had voted no originally and he went to yes. So it was five, it was five in favor, just, just to clarify the result.
I'm, I'm aware of the vote. It was very clear in Mario's, obviously I would have been the one opposing it. I've been very strong always in having competitive bidding. We already have prevailing wage, so we can't, you know, you're sort of restricted to that payment of workers. And I always understood that, I, I know this isn't the time for the discussion. So I, I just agree with Paul and I'll move on. Thanks.
Thank you. You just want.
Go ahead, yeah, you still have the floor.
I would, I would just like to make the following observation going forward. For me personally, so my fellow councilmen and mayor know exactly where I'm coming from. This $178 million, again, I do most, many of the people on this council have a long history with Board of Education, education is not, that money was allotted for, voted on by taxpayers and, and parents for their children and grandchildren for education. That is the driving reason for that huge bonding issue to be moving forward. And I would just like to say that I will always be, I will be looking at this project going forward from how does this impact this school, this money, improving education specifically in Torrington? And that's what I'll be, that's the focus I'll be using. Hopefully, other people will see it the same way. Now I'm done, Mayor.
You're done, okay. All right, so thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow. The, just to close out the meeting, I just handed out an email to the members on Zoom, the budget calendar. As you know, two weeks ago, the council did agree to allow us to extend the budget adoption to afford us ample opportunity to get guidance on the American Rescue Plan funding and hopefully to get a better handle on what the state budget is going to look like, particularly because the tiered pilot program remains to be a question while the legislation was approved. The question about whether or not the municipal revenue share account will actually be funded remains to be answered. And there was an appropriation for distressed municipalities, of which Torrington would benefit. So we are under this extension beyond the 15th of May. But we, actually, Wednesday, the 15th, that's wrong, this is 2020. But what we are looking at now is a tight timeline so that we can wrap up the public hearing. The Board of Finances worked to set the mill rate, allow for the 10 days of public notice in the newspaper and afford the tax collector ample opportunity to prepare the tax bills and get them out before July 1. So on the 24th this week, we, excuse me, on Thursday, the 20th, the Budget Subcommittee will finalize their deliberations and formulate a recommendation. On Monday, the 24th, it would be a special meeting of the City Council to review the city budgets. Wednesday, June 2nd, would be a special meeting, a joint meeting with the Board of Public Safety to review the public safety budgets. June 3rd would be a special joint meeting with the Board of Finance and public hearing. And then on Tuesday, the 15th of June, the Board of Finance will finalize the budget and set the mill rate, barring any unforeseen circumstances. And we've been there before with the state, not completing their budget deliberations on time. But barring any unforeseen circumstances, that will be the timeline over the next three weeks. And with that said, there being no further business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow, seconded by Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.